Good evening, Rolling Meadows. This is September 25th, 2018, meeting of the City Council, beginning at 7:30. Please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Cannon?
Here.
Alderman Buttmetz?
Present.
Majewski?
Here.
Gallows?
Here.
Baner?
Here.
Deestis?
Present.
Williams?
Here.
Seven present and none absence. There is a quorum. The first order of business is to approve the minutes of the September 11th, 2018 City Council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Mr. Baner has made it. Do I have a second? Is there discussion? Any corrections, deletions? Mr. Buttmetz?
I'd like to draw your attention to page seven, item number six of the minutes. We're given 100 words detailing how a Palatine resident requested for a stop sign to be placed on Dupont Avenue in Rolling Meadows. Those 100 words document an item which was reported for less than one minute of our prior meeting. In contrast, however, I look you, ask you to look at item G on page six of the minutes. There's a total of 89 words used to describe over 35 minutes of council deliberations, discussions, and votes on the firehouse. This council needs to think how important they are to the city of Rolling Meadows. We can talk and talk and talk, and we can spend 15 million bucks, and it generates 89 words out of our recorded paper space on the minutes. The traffic committee considers installing a $100 stop sign, and it gets more press. We need more transparency. We need more accountability. I move that we table the minutes unapproved. I think it is incumbent upon the city staff to accurately and completely report what happens at a city council meeting in writing and in proportion in the written minutes.
Are you, are you?
I move to table the minutes.
Are you motion, motion to postpone the minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Mr. Gallows has made a second. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Gallows?
I would say I agree with that. You know, I was asked to give an apology, not to belabor this issue, but for the record, I would like to see that apology existing in there, and not that my comments were about a fire station.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion to postpone? I mean, to postpone the minutes? Yes, Mr. Baner?
Thank you. I'm just curious how this works. Does the, does the clerk transcribe from the video? And that's, that's how that would happen if we were going to do a word-for-word transcription of the meetings?
Well, I believe in, in the past, since we had Ginny here, our previous clerk, that's how it was done, because she would not only, I'd watch her do the minutes here, but she would also go back and watch the entire, the entire meeting and then transcribe it.
Okay. I guess another question of mine is, are there any cities that now with, now with a live stream and then a recorded video, do away with the written minutes and just, and just direct citizens to the actual live stream, or everybody still does the written minutes?
I believe it's still the written minutes, because you have the Freedom of Information Act.
Okay. I'm just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. So, is there any further discussion on the motion to postpone the minutes? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Cannon?
Uh, no. No.
Alderman Buttmetz?
Yes.
Majewski?
Yes.
Gallows?
Yes.
Baner?
Yeah.
Deestis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
The, the motion passes six to one. The minutes will be postponed till the next meeting. And I believe the direction is to have the minutes transcribed entirely from the last-minute meeting. This brings us to the mayor's report. Couple of points. Number one, at, when we have discussions up here and we have residents come and address the council, I always ask that we be civil, and I ask that they direct their questions to me. At the last meeting, there was a resident that directed their questions to Mr. Deestis, and I apologize, I should have stepped in and made sure that they were directing them to the chair. That's where we need to go. So I also wish that we can continue to be as civil and positive as we can, because we are the face of the city of Rolling Meadows. Moving on to more positive, we had our city market on Saturday. For those of you that were, were here, it was really great, because we had Rolling Meadows High School and, who partnered with Frem High School, and we had the robotics samples out there, and we had their high-mileage cars on display, so we had a lot of folks that were really kind of excited about that. We did have a discussion with some residents about referendums, and I'll go in more detail on that at the, not on the agenda, but for many of you may be aware of that Harper College is going to be issuing 180 million dollars, 180 million dollar, requesting a referendum on 180 million dollars worth of bonds. So there were some questions on that. So I have spoken with our attorney, and I have spoken with Mr. Comstock, and there'll be further discussion on that. And finally, for those of you that participated, we had our community events foundation, we had a fundraiser at Jersey Mike's. It was, it was a good time, lots to see, lots of folks out there, and I think we raised some dollars. This brings us to ward reports. Are there any ward reports? Mr. Majewski?
Thank you. I just want to quickly say, there was a, a resident in my ward who was trying to assist another resident across the street, an elderly woman, and Peterson Roofing does this once a year promotion that you vote for that, you tell the story, and you vote for them, and they could, if they get the most votes, they win, Peterson will do a new roof for them. So the resident that was trying to help the other, nearly got it, lost by four votes, but I just want to say that I thought that was pretty nice, that one resident was looking out for another, and, and I know that I had spoken with some of the firemen, and they had, you know, done support on this also, and other residents in the area. So I just wanted to, you know, let people know that it's really nice when you hear that residents really care about one another and looking to help each other, and I, I think that was a wonderful thing that this gentleman did in my ward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Majewski. Any other ward reports? Seeing now, seeing done, the council meeting is now open to members of the audience for 20 minutes to address the city council on matters that are on the agenda or regarding other issues. We ask that persons wishing to address the city council keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the council as a whole through the mayor, and vanity may not be used in any form. The first signatory is Linda Ballantyne. Hi there, Ms. Ballantyne. You made it in under the wire, I see.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The Rolling Meadows Chamber is here before you tonight to support the Stadium Sports Club in moving forward with their endeavors to obtain a video gaming machines in their establishment. The Chamber seeks the council's favorable approval this evening to waive first reading in order for the Stadium Sports Club to be issued a G1 license in a timely manner, based on the renovations and expansion already taking place within their restaurant. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward, Ms. Ballantyne. The next, the next signatory is Vince Buffalino of the Stadium.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you, Linda. That's why I'm here, is basically to get the G1 license. We started back in May 9th. The state got my license application, and we finally have the state license hanging on the wall. The walls that are walling off the machine area, the machines are in place, so the last piece of the puzzle is the G1 license. Supposedly, the state is coming in the end of the week to do their final inspection, and people that do the programming are supposed to set it up, and I'd hate for not having the G1 license to hold up the process any more than it's been. I appreciate everything the council and the mayor's done so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming forward. The next signatory is Ruben, and I'm sorry, I apologize, I cannot make out the, Ruben, I cannot make out the, your last, could you give me your last name and spell it for the record, please?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ruben Ivanis. Sorry, little bit nervous for saying it.
That's fine. Thank you for coming forward.
Yeah, and I may try to speak my best English. I just had a simple question. We got lots of traffic in the Algonquin Road and close to, close to the Donkey Donuts.
Okay.
We always got very difficult time to cross over there. What I had to do, my neighbors around, what we can do to put a license, a stop license over there.
Okay. Thank you for coming forward. This moves us forward with, since we're done, it brings us to pending ordinances for the second reading. Ordinance A, number eight, number 18-42, easement agreements for the Golf Road, Ring Road for entry marker. This ordinance, if adopted, would have the city of Rolling Meadows approve and accept for record, recording purposes, a permanent easement being granted for section of land to be used for the purpose of multi-user marker, entry marker, sign, and associated appendatures and landscaping, which will be owned and maintained by the city of Rolling Meadows. The section of land is located in the northeast corner of the intersection of Ring Road and Golf Road within the city of Rolling Meadows. The proposed entry marker sign is to be constructed within the permanent easement previously granted by AT&amp;T and to be granted by Whitestone Atrium LLC. The city's attorney has reviewed the easement language and prepared the attached ordinance. Staff is requesting approval of the easement. Pending preparation and subject to final review by the city manager and city attorney, the proposed entry marker, multi-user entry marker sign was discussed at the June 19th, 2018 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Do I have a motion to move this ordinance forward? Ms. Majewski has made that? Do I have a second, Mr.? Thank you. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Baner?
Yes.
Deestis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Buttmetz?
Yes.
Majewski?
Yes.
Gallows?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, that, that ordinance does move forward. Now, this brings us to ordinance B, number 18-00, to amend the alcohol liquor code to approve the G1 liquor license for video gaming for the Stadium Sports Club and Pizza located at 4015 Algonquin Road. Now, just so that we review, we're asking, the first question will be to waive the first reading, and then the second question will be to pass the ordinance. The city council is being asked to approve a city's first-class G1 liquor license for video gaming in the rural city of Rolling Meadows. The Illinois Gaming Board approved a video gaming license for the Stadium Sports Club and Pizza, which is located at 4015 Algonquin Road at their Friday, September 14th meeting, and was given a written license on Wednesday, September 19th, 2018. Staff is asking for a waiver of first reading so the stadium can utilize a G1 liquor license for video gaming immediately, so there's no delay by the city to activate the machines. Is there a Alderman willing to make the motion for waiving of the first reading? Some movement, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Deestis has made that? Do I have a second? Is there any discussion on the motion to waive the first reading? Mr. Buttmetz?
I will reiterate that I think it's poor practice to waive the first reading. I have no problems with this applicants moving forward. It's just, in principle, it bothers me to do so for other matters.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the first? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll, please?
Deestis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Buttmetz?
No.
Majewski?
Yes.
Gallows?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Six in favor and one opposed, that ordinance does, is waived for first reading. Now, the, the ordinance is now back for final approval. Is there a motion? Some movement, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Deestis has made that? Is there a second? Mr. Buttmetz has made that? Any discussion on the, the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Buttmetz?
Yes.
Majewski?
Yes.
Gallows?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Deestis?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed, the ordinance is adopted. Congratulations, sir. The first gaming license in the city of Rolling Meadows. This now brings us to C, the motion to approve the payment of the bills on warrants dated 9/25-18. Is there a motion to approve the warrants? Mr. Baner has made that, Ms. Majewski has seconded. Is there any, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon?
Yes.
Buttmetz?
Yes.
Majewski?
Yes.
Gallows?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Deestis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant, warrant is approved. The next item on the agenda is the consent resolutions. It consists of 10 items D through M. Does any Alderman wish to move, to remove any items from the consent agenda for resolutions? Seeing none, the chair declares it an order for one measure, one motion to consider all resolutions without debate. Is there such a motion? Ms. Majewski has made that motion, seconded, been seconded. The question is, shall all resolutions be adopted? Resolution D, number 18-R-90, to accept the use of facilities agreement in the case of emergencies and certain locations. This resolution, if adopted, would enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Rolling Meadows Library and Community Church of Rolling Meadows, allowing the use of their facilities during a community emergency, should there be a need to provide shelter or other uses facilitated, facilitated by the city's emergency management team. E, resolution number 18-R-91, is to award an engineering contract for 2019 resurfacing street program. This resolution, if adopted, would award a contract for professional design engineering services for the proposed 2019 local street program, as presented at the September 18th, 2018 Committee of the Whole Meeting. The engineering costs associated with the street program is to be funded through the local roads funds, while the construction costs utilize both the motor fuel tax fund and the local road tax fund. The current FY fiscal year 2018 budget amount includes approximately $900,000 in street improvements, along with $100,000 in support engineering costs associated with the current 2018 construction observation services, and the following year, 2019, survey, testing, and design services. F, resolution number 18-R-92, accept the change order supplement for Barker Bridge cost. This resolution, if adopted, would approve supplemental agreement number one to the design of engineering services that have been required to complete the land acquisition services and additional engineering services for the proposed Barker Avenue Bridge rehabilitation project. This project was originally engineered for a schedule that was to have pending advertised by IDOT in January 2018 for anticipated contract award to follow, for construction to take place in June, August 2018. This project is granted, is grant funded by the Federal Highway Administration Bridge Rehabilitation Program, administered by the Illinois Department of Transportation Design Engineering, has been virtually complete towards the end of 2017. In the late 20s, in late 2017, it was discovered that three small parcels of land needed to be acquired by the city of Rolling Meadows to allow the project to proceed. These parcels are property owned by High School District 214, property owned by Williamsburg Apartments, property owned by Community Consolidated School District 15. Acquisitions of these three parcels became critical when it's determined that the east side structure support of the bridge is not located within the existing 66-foot public right-of-way for Barker Avenue and Bridge. The federal funds cannot be used if any part of the project improvement is located on private property. Land acquisition or permanent easements are required. In order to proceed with this project, final approval by IDOT for a January 2019 letting, approval of the supplemental engineering sign costs is necessary and justified at this time. Funding is available in the fiscal year 2018 budget for these professional service costs. This brings us to resolution G, number 18-R-93, which is to award a contract for Kirchhoff Road traffic signal. This resolution, if adopted, would award a contract to Mead Electric for Traffic Services Structure Modification at the intersection of Pausalee Plaza Drive and Kirchhoff Road. This modification is necessitated by the upcoming construction associated with the Kirchhoff Road resurfacing project. The traffic control structure is located directly in line with the required ADA ramp for this sidewalk bike path. The Illinois Department of Transportation was very specific, has very specific requirements related to the construction of these ramps, which cannot be achieved without the relocation due to the use of the state federal funding. The proposed improvement will result in the intersection being changed to a flashing read stop sign intersection while the modifications are taking place. This inconvenience will be kept to a minimum and not played place at night. Resolution 8, number 18-R-94, accept state and Illinois Department of Transportation step agreement. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize and accept the Illinois Department of Transportation award to the city of Rolling Meadows funding to conduct specific traffic enforcement for impaired driving mobilizations and occupant protection mobilizations during specific campaigns designed, designated by IDOT, all in an effort to reduce severe energy, severe injury and fatal traffic crashes. Council is being asked to accept the grant award and will be used in conjunction with other law enforcement agencies to increase traffic safety. By improving, by approving a resolution, the city provides evidence of executive support for the program, which is a necessary element of the grant compliance. The Illinois Department of Transportation, Transportation Step Grant of $19,945 is for reimbursement of overtime benefit costs, equipment expenses associated with the enforcement campaigns designed by the state. Step Grant for fiscal year 2019 that runs through October 1st, 2018 through, I'm sorry, from October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2019. I, resolution number 18-R-25, is to award a contract to purchase 2019 sewer combination truck 2006 Vector 2100. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize the purchase of a new sewer combination truck for the Public Works Department, which will be utilized by the Sewer Division. This vehicle has been reviewed and supported for replacement by the Vehicle Replacement Committee, and funds are to be provided in the fiscal year 2019 budget. The Vehicle Replacement Committee had numerous discussions regarding the current condition of this critical piece of equipment. After reviewing all the information as a result of the lead time required to get the order placed to receive this piece of equipment in fiscal year 2019 and to avoid further repair across the existing unit, the committee recommended seeking approval to proceed with placing the order in fiscal year 2018 for payment in 2019. This vehicle will replace the existing sewer combination truck RM170-T347, which will be 13 years old at the time of replacement and has approximately 5,983 operating hours. The vehicle is used for hydro, excavating, catch basin cleaning, utility locating, pothole and sanitary storm sewer. They are two vendors that offer comparable equipment as part of the Northwest Municipal Purchasing Cooperative, which, that also meet the specifications needed by the city. The recommendation of the Public Works Department is to purchase the Vector model 2112 plus, with a fire line, freight liner chassis in the amount of $400,944. Resolution number 18-R-96, is award a contract for roof replacing, for roof replace on water pumping station number one, 3201 Central Road. This resolution, if adopted, would approve and award the proposed contract to advance roofing at 3601 Edison Place, Rolling Meadows, Illinois, for the amount of $18,160 for the removal disposal and installation of a new thermoplastic vinyl fin TPO roof system and two new skylights. The Public Works Department has no previous experience with this rolling metals contractor, but staff has contacted other communities for which they have completed the work and have received positive feedback. There is a great need to complete this project as soon as possible prior to winter season. The roofing material deterioration has caused the roof to fail sooner than expected, and the location of the most significant failure is occurring above electrical and telemetry equipment. This project needs to be scheduled to be completed in the next two to four weeks, subject to the contractor's schedule. It will be funded by outside. It will be funded by outside repair and maintenance, storage tank costing repairs 20-70-5030-54640 as budgeted within the utility fund. Resolution K, number 18-R-97, reject bids received for the Arbor Drive Phase 1 Water Main replacement project. This resolution, if adopted, would reject seven bids received on September 4, 2018 for the proposed construction of a Phase 1 Arbor Drive Water Main project. After conferring with the project manager, it is the collective recommendation of the staff at City Council reject the bids at this time and rebid the project later in 2018 with construction in winter-spring 2019. As this project is programmed for 2019 as well, staff is investigating the object of increasing the scope of the work in 2019, thereby increasing quantities to obtain better unit pricing due to the scope of the work. Additionally, advertising the project for bidding later in the year for 2019 construction is expected to attain a much better unit price. This proposal will be presented to the City Council for consideration as the agenda item at a later date in 2018. The low bid is $542,291.50, while the fiscal year budget amount is approximately $425,000 for construction, exclusive of design, engineering, and construction observation expenses. L, Resolution number 18-R-98, award a contract for 2018-19 sanitary lateral and T-lining project. This resolution, if adopted, would award a construction contract for the pipelining and T-lining of sanitary sewer laterals and residential homes within the public right-of-ways as part of the city's 2018-2019 capital improvement program. One sealed bid proposal was received for the above referenced project. The bid received was from Performance Pipelining Incorporated in Ottawa, Illinois, in the amount of $252,750, with an additional alternate bid amount of $62,460. Due to the specialized nature of lateral T-lining installation, there were only three prospective bidders in the area qualified for this type of installation. M, Resolution number 18-R-99, approve the change order number one for repairs required to well number two, 3004 Campbell Drive. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize change order to approve to the approved contract with Ley Christian Company for the well maintenance project of well number two located at 3004 Campbell Street. The pumping components were removed and transported to the contractor's facility for a detailed inspection this summer. The inspection noted that 30-year-old bowl assembly has deteriorated severely and needs to be rebuilt and reset at a new length, new depth of 700 feet. Previous depth was 860 feet. Items needing replacement or repair, which were identified after the well assembly was removed and inspected, include installation of 220 feet of new column pipe, machine and resurfacing of nine sections of column pipe, replacement of 160 feet of oil tubing and bearings, high-pressure jet cleaning of 540 feet of depth tubing, repair pump bowl assembly, and required well motor 350 horsepower repairs. The original purchase order for this work in March 2018 was $142,000. The amount that the purchase order was intentionally kept low at that time due better control of cost for repairs upon inspection. The change order request is for $90,668, making the total project cost to $238,868 for completing repairs, test pumping, and placing the well back in service. This change order will utilize the balance of $41,800 of the budget line item, leaving an additional $48,868 needed to complete the necessary repairs. Again, the question is, shall all 10 resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmets?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
No.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastas?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
With six in favor and one opposed, the resolutions are approved. This brings us to other businesses, other business reports. There are no appointments, there are no proclamations. That brings us to staff reports, community items of interest. Mr. Crumstock?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Actually, I'm going to do the next three, but I do have some add-ons and one adaway, if you want to call it that, that I'll end up at a point. But as the mayor mentioned, we did have our last market that was on Saturday, September 22. Do you want to appreciate and do you want to thank all the volunteers who make this happen, especially two of them who are sitting here because they're in front of me, so Dave Whitney and Alderman Majikis, thank you for all your volunteer time for the foundation. And again, we do thank all the volunteers for making this a continued success. It was kind of cool on Saturday, but we did have a nice showing, and it was nice seeing the cars that were out there at this point in time. So we hope to see everybody in 2019. We are still planning to hopefully have it back at the Community Church location. As the mayor did say during his remarks, we do thank everybody who came out on Monday, September 24, to Jersey Mike Subs located at 1450 Gulf Road to obviously eat and make a donation to the foundation. 25 percent of all the proceeds from the event are going back to the foundation. And coming up on Saturday, October 6, the city, park district, and the community event foundation will be conducting a hometown holdown that will have a little bit more information coming as number three. But that one starts at noon. If you come to Public Works on that Saturday, October 6, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, that is actually going to be the, between Swank and the city of Rolling Meadows. So if you're listening to my voice and you are a member of Swank, so other municipalities, you can participate in the city's electronic recycling and document destruction event. And again, that goes from 9:00 a.m. to noon at the Public Works Building at 3900 Birdnik Street. And then we do have a list on our e-news and some of the other pieces, what is actually able to be recycled for outdated electronic equipment. And obviously, we do have a limit. It is six banker boxes for documents. If you bring those to Public Works, they will destroy that at that point in time. And then obviously, on Saturday, October 13, the Fire Department will be conducting an open house from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Newkerts Fire Station at 2455 Plum Grove Road. While supplies last, they do have some food. The chief and his group, they do have different events set for that day between showing what a room with a sprinkler can do compared to a room without a sprinkler, and then obviously extrication and some other pieces that are set up for that date. And as we've been trying to say, have you completed the comprehensive plan update, community survey? Are you interested in responding to the survey? We do have cards in the back of City Hall, and obviously here on the second floor we do have. But if you would like to get information out, please fill out a survey, or you can So again, it's another way of getting information out. You know, what are improvements would you like to see? What do you want to see in this future? Obviously, the Planning and Zoning Commission and so the Ad-Hoc Committee, I've already had one meeting to talk about items. They are having another one coming up, and that's actually on Tuesday, October 2. So the Economic Development Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, October 2, at 6:00 p.m. Tentatively, we have two items that have 6B requests. And obviously, the first one is for a 5540 Meadow Park. Some of you will remember that's where Sorta Mad is actually at. We have a 6B request at 1601 Rowling Road. We'll have more discussion on that one coming up, and then Business Advocate and Business Updates, and then obviously other items in the chamber. And then, as I mentioned also, the Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting on Tuesday, October 2, at 7:30. And again, all that they really have is the comp plan discussion that they have going on. And obviously, the one adaway that I do want to add that was not in the write-up is that we had firefighter paramedic John Loesch, Sr. He was deployed to assist Mavis, Illinois, Technical Rescue Team to provide search and rescue to the victims of Hurricane Florence. John was actually deployed for 10 days. He's on his way back here, home, and he was actually in North Carolina for that deployment. And again, that's another deployment that we talk about. Mavis, and when we get a call, Illinois reaches out, and we're more than happy to provide. And as the council members know, we have done that in the past in the state of Illinois, North Carolina, Florida, and other places throughout the United States. And that's just, we always hope, what we give, we hope that if we ever need, they will be here too. So that was it for items of interest.
I gather you're up for the rest of the evening?
You've got, yeah, for the next few. So for the new business licenses for August 2018, we had two of them. Obviously, nothing that really needs to be truly highlighted, but I do like the first one called Tree Hopper Toys, especially if you're thinking about the holiday season coming up, might be something good for you to stop by and see what they are about. And then the third item is, what the mayor was mentioning, is actually a little more detail about the hometown holdown that I alluded to. This is our third annual hometown. It does happen on Saturday, October 6, at Kimball Hill Park, from noon to 5:00 p.m. There will be horse-drawn hayrides between noon and 4:00. Ms. Jamie Farmsong will start at about 1:30. She's about an hour out there for those who made it last year before the rain. That was Jamie, who was actually onstage at that point in time. And then we have $5 Cowboy Cookout that will be from 12:30 to 2:30, or while supplies last. For people who've gone to National Night Out and some of our other events that we've had, we're bringing back the Bubble Lady. She does different things for your little kids in different ideas. And then the country band, known as Killing Bottles, that we had them last year also, they will be onstage between about 2:30 to 4:30 to finish up the event. We do have kits, crafts, and games. We do have some face painting balloons. If weather is good, we should have the bounce house actually done. We do hope that everybody will show to, again, this is, as we stated, third annual hometown holdown. It does happen on Saturday, October 6, between noon and 5:00 p.m. at Kimball Hill.
Are we, are you finished, Mr. Crumstock?
No.
Just never know what surprises you may have for us. This brings us to matters not on the agenda. I mentioned this, see, you have it on there? Seeing your snowpaw?
That, um...
It's off of mine, but it's on your...
Yeah, it's off because it was not done, and as you know, I've been in and out, and that was not completed in a timely manner. And again, we need to get the agenda, and it was not finished how I liked it. So that's why it's on your agenda but not out there.
Thank you. That brings us to matters not on the agenda. My first point is, I mentioned concerning referendums, and I'm told that, Mr. Crumstock, tentatively in October, we will have Harper College, tentatively?
Tentatively, yeah. Harper College is going to be here at our Committee of the Hall meeting. They've been told 15 minutes to do their presentation. We'll see how that goes. The mayor and I went to a presentation recently, and it was a little bit longer than 15 minutes, but we are giving them the Committee of the Hall to start the meeting before we have some additional discussions.
And then I would like us to have a discussion about referendums with the city of Rolling Meadows, because I've, speaking with a number of residents, I would like to see us move forward with an ordinance that any future funding for bonds by the city of Rolling Meadows would have to be approved by a referendum of the residents. It's their money, and with this latest project, I believe that we need to have the citizens approve any future bond money that we're going to use by referendum. Any other matters not on the agenda? Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things I'd like to just cover. I'm hoping that we'll see on the next com meeting, the Algonquin property that we didn't put on last week for a number of reasons, mostly because Barry wasn't here. I'd like to see that included in the next one.
It is.
I'd also like to get an update on what's going on with the Dominic site. We really haven't heard anything in public what's going on there. And another one, another thing that kind of occurred to me last week, when we approved two new entry signs for our city, and we kind of went with a unique program on Gulf Road where we actually have corporate names on the bottom of the sign. I would really like to see us soon put together a plan where we made the same offer to other corporations on some of the other signs. I think it's a nice way to broadcast some companies that are proud of being in Rolling Meadows, and also help defer cost to the sign. So I'd like to see a program put together sooner than later on that, if that's possible. And the last item, Mr. Mayor, thanks for your patience. I know I was by the Algonquin site for the fire station today, and I noticed that we're actually proceeding with that. I was wondering if we could just get a general idea of start dates and estimated things like when the foundational going and things like that. They don't have to be specific, because I know weather affects all of that, but it would really be helpful. And in conjunction with that, we were told we were going to bid off 15 pretty quickly. I would just like to get an update as to when we can expect to see the bid stuff from 15, and when the start date might happen on that property. So thank you for your patience.
You're welcome. Any other matters not on the agenda? Seeing none, there's a request to go into closed session for person matters of personnel, number 5, ILCS 120-2 of the Open Meetings Act. And then there's a second request to go in for closed session for personnel, 5, ILCS 120-21 of the Illinois Opens Act. Do I have a motion to go into closed session? We have a motion? Do we have a second? Is there a discussion? Clerk, clerk call the roll, please.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastas?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
Thank you. Seven in favor and none opposed. We are done. We are now going to close sessions.